Having one, call the regular town council meeting Tuesday, January 16th, 2018. Prayer by Councilor Denny. Please stand.
Lord of all, although each of us comes to you from our own faith, we all do so from the same reason, to ask your guidance as we conduct our business on behalf of the Town of Enfield and its citizens. Help us to always ask the central question, is what we are discussing best for Enfield and its citizens? And then to honestly answer the question in our hearts before we vote. Amen.
We're allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Suzanne, please.
Councilor Denny.
Here.
Councilor Falk.
Here.
Mayor Ludwig.
Here.
Councilor Mueller.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Here.
Councilor Ungar.
Here.
Councilor Arnone.
Here.
Councilor Bosco.
Here.
Councilor Sapawa.
Here.
Councilor Crisati.
Here.
There's 11 members present, none are absent.
In case of a fire, we have the doors in the back, please orderly go right or left, go out the back, or go out to the doors on what would be my left, your right. Take the first doors down on the left, go down the stairs, go turn around, go right out the doors. Minutes of proceeding meeting, regular meeting, January 2nd, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Falk, second by Councilor Ungar, any discussion in the regular meeting? Hearing done, all those in favor? All those opposed? Eleven in favor? Special meeting, January 3rd, 2018, do you have a motion to approve? Councilor Falk, second by Councilor Mueller, any discussion in the special meeting? Hearing done, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Nine in favor, two abstentions. Special guest, Enfield Together Coalition, please. Welcome, how you guys doing? Welcome.
Thank you so much. Suzanne? Thank you so much for having us. This is an exciting time for our Enfield Together Coalition, and tonight we are going to unveil, for the first time, our video project we have been working on since 2017. And town council is the first to see our finished product. And I just want to explain how this kinda came into being. So as co-chair of ETC with Tom Arnone, so he's a part of how this all happened, I have been privileged to attend many conferences with CATCA, which is, which stands for Community Anti-Drug Coalitions of America. And at one of the gatherings, I was able to connect with someone from another coalition. There's a lot of networking that goes on. And they had put together a video with positive messaging using coaches from their community. So I began pursuing that idea for our coalition, and it became one of our ETC initiatives. So then the next step, and this is in a nutshell, it really was longer than that, but you had to go through all the steps. The next step was to create a script and make it more Enfield-specific, and we would also use our coaches from Enfield High. We then collaborated with our high school coaches, which really Andrea Maszek made happen, and got the process rolling. We connected with Comey from ETV to complete the video PSA. So the purpose of our 32nd message is to bring awareness about disposing of unused medications in our community, and our hope is to use it in our community through social media and school athletic nights. We're open to more ideas of anything you might have of how we are to best use it. And I do want to, before we present it, thank people, the people who made it possible. And first of all, would be Corey O'Connell, who is the Enfield High Athletic Director, Amy Bartholomew, and James Liver, they're gonna be the stars that you're gonna be seeing, and you'll be seeing their names in the video. And then Comey Bueno, our videographer, who put it all together. And also Jean Hoy and Andrea Maszek in supporting me to, and also Tom, to make this happen. I just felt like this was something I had a heart to, I saw it somewhere else, and I wanted to see it in our community. So it actually happened. So tonight will be the first time that we will be showing this, and we hope it will get lots of use in other places. Yes?
The number one place teens get prescription medication is for friends or family without them knowing. Here's how you as parents can help. Monitor your medication, block them away, and deposit any unused drugs in the drop box at the Enfield Police Department.
Be aware, educate one another, and as coaches, parents, and community members, we can put an end to teen prescription drug misuse. Together, we can make a difference.
That's it. Short and sweet. So we want to give you opportunity, if you have any questions you'd like to ask us about the video, or thoughts?
Sure. Councilor Ungar? Well, as I always say, co-chair hardly. The real work is right, right there. Tremendous job with this, first time I've seen it myself. Looking forward to see it. So where can we expect to see it?
Well, on athletic nights, hopefully at Enfield High, in our social media, we're gonna put it out. But we'd like ideas of maybe how you think we might be able to use it best. We're open for ideas.
So our own ETV also, it should circulate on that? I think we can find a way to get it on there also?
Yeah. And we hope to make other videos in the future with, you know, our other messaging, so.
Comey did a great job too.
Yes, he did.
It looks very professional, it's awesome. Thanks so much for your hard work. I know each and every one of the whole coalition put a lot of time and effort into this, and the community appreciates it.
I'm gonna let Kelly Fisher say a couple words that on our coalition.
Hi. I just wanted to stress how important it is to get rid of any prescription drugs in your home. I don't, a lot of you already know that my son Alex took a prescription pill of OxyContin that was laced with fentanyl and passed away. So my importance is to get those drugs that are in your cabinets off the street, bring it to the box. You can get little packs at Walmart that can dissolve the medicine, just you can throw it away like that. All it takes is your friend to come in and go through your cabinets, a repairman to go through your cabinets. Any person that comes in your house will go through your cabinets just to get those prescription drugs. So it's just so important, I can't stress how important it is to get those drugs out of your house and somewhere where it's safe that nobody can get to them.
Thank you.
Councilor Falk?
Just one other thought in addition to ETV, if that video could be posted on websites or Facebook pages or social media, I think you get more exposure using that than perhaps ETV. Not saying ETV doesn't good, it is good. But today's society is all about social media.
Different audience.
Yeah, different audience.
So what we'll do is put it on the Enfield Youth Services page, and feel free to share it, be spreading the message. What we loved was 30 seconds, it's just the right amount of time to capture your attention, but not be, you know, too, too long. So Comey did a great job getting it to 30 seconds.
Councilor Bosco?
Well, on to ETV. The problem with ETV is we don't have a lot of younger people seeing it, but there's a pretty good viewership of older people that watch it. So I would say we should put it just before every planning and zoning meeting, every council meeting, any of the meetings that go on there. It's just a 30-second blip and then open up with the other meeting, because the people in the audience are gonna be ready to watch the council meeting. And them are the people that really you wanna have them lock their prescriptions up. So, I mean, I don't know how, how hard that would be, but I would say we should put them in front of the meetings, and that'd be just a good opener of every meeting. And you can also close it like that, too. I don't think we can't, we'll have, it's not gonna be too much. You know, at least if you do it for a spot, and then you stop and then do it again, you know, so people just don't overlook it either.
Do we put it in the Super Bowl commercial? Yeah, I know.
Thank you.
One other highlight I would like to say is on January 23rd, from four to five o'clock, we have our Enfield Together Coalition Conversation Meeting, Community Conversation. So if anyone is interested in learning more and talking, what is on your mind of what's happening in Enfield? That's a place that we would like to discuss those issues, so we're making it more community conversation. So anybody who's available to come, four o'clock, four to five on the 23rd.
Any, any thought to the Honor Society folks, whether it be in high school or junior high, doing some sort of ambassadorship for this, where they, I know they Snapchat, I don't know if they can Snapchat, but you know what I mean? So actually have those, those kids who do a really good job and doing the right thing in school be your ambassadors, maybe send them to the elementary schools, you know, stuff like that, where, you know, you get in, use, you know, use the good kids that are in those programs to your advantage. Won't cost you a dime. And actually, they get their, you know, they get their hours by doing it. Just a thought.
Yeah. Well, this is like really breaking the mold of things we've done before, so I just feel like the possibilities will be endless as we look at it and see where it can go.
I know we're not here to talk about the opioids, but there's a lot of stuff going on in the marketplace.
That's right.
So maybe we can have you back, because I know some insurance companies are doing some interesting things, and maybe we could reach out to ours. That'll be for a separate conversation, but I know you've probably been following the news on some of the interesting things going on. So again, sorry, go ahead.
I don't, I don't know if any of you know, but I also do a mock bedroom for Alex's Army, and it shows parents where kids would potentially hide drugs or alcohol in their rooms. I'd love you guys to all see it, if you want me to set it up for you one night, I would be more than happy to do that.
More than welcome back, yes. That'd be a great idea. Well, just, I don't know, maybe second meeting in February, Brian?
I'll have to get with Deb and look at what the council's schedule is for the next few meetings, but as soon as we can find appropriate time, be more than happy to get that on the council's docket.
That'd be great, we appreciate it.
Great.
I had one comment, thank you for coming in, it's a great video.
Thank you, Lauren.
Even in today's world of videos and communications and social media and all that, we can't hear it enough.
Right.
So, thank you.
Councilor Crisati?
Yeah, I want to thank you for that video. I think it's wonderful involving the high schools with that. Maybe an idea of maybe putting this video at doc, in doctors' offices.
Yeah. Well, that's a good idea.
And pharmacies in Enfield. And I think they would be open to that.
Yeah. Thank you.
But thank you.
Well, our tagline is "Moving Forward, Drug-Free, Finishing Strong," and we want to finish strong with this message. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for coming, thank you.
Thank you.
Members from the North Central Health District, please. Welcome, how you doing?
My favorite thing about coming here is that I get to sit while I'm talking. So give me a minute to... I know, I still have a lot today. If I can figure out the technology, it'll be all set. Is this a different button than...
He's left the remote right in the corner there, too.
I am the weak link. Oh, there it goes, there it goes. Okay, first let me introduce myself, I see...
Can we, can you get the remote?
Oh.
And give us a view of it?
We can't see it.
To see that.
Thank you.
Probably already know.
That was Deputy Mayor's job right there. That's why I asked him to do it, I don't know.
I think it's the VGA component one.
There you go. Thank you. Great presentation, thank you. No, go ahead.
I see a lot of familiar faces, but for those of the, who don't know me, my name's Patrice, I'm the Director of Health for the North Central District Health Department. We have a couple of board members with us, Mary Ann Turner, representing Enfield, and Fred Journalist, from another one of our member towns, Ellington, is here as well. So I was asked to just provide a very brief, kind of 30,000-foot overview, and then it'll be a good way to start the conversation, and then if you want more information, I'm happy to provide it, or come back at any time. Before I jump into it, though, one thing I want to mention is that we recently received an opioid grant, an opioid use misuse prevention grant for four years, and what seems to be happening is every time I go to any meeting, there's someone else in the community doing some important work around opioid misuse. So I'd like to connect and hopefully show that, we can put that right on our website.
Great.
If, if people don't mind, people outside of Enfield seeing it. But there's going to be even, there's just increasingly more and more collaboration, and our grant charges us with really assessing data in our eight-member towns, but three target towns, Enfield, Vernon, and Wyndham, where there's, where the death data is, is even more concerning than in our other towns. And so the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, for the first time, is working with local health departments, and they've selected four districts to get, so that a wide range of towns can get served. So that's pretty exciting based on what we already just heard. So just to talk really briefly about local health departments in Connecticut, I had to actually look up the data, because the number of local health departments in Connecticut keeps changing. There was 70, currently there's 69. And the different types are district, which you're currently part of, full-time municipal health departments, and part-time health departments. You will see this number of 69 start to decrease to some extent, because the state of Connecticut, who, for those of you that remember, they proposed huge regional consolidation last year, they've kind of stepped back a little bit from that, and, but they are really working on a lot of the part-time departments to try to move them either into a district or into full-time status, so that they could have the breadth of services that other health departments have. We're funded in a number of ways. We get state per capita, and that's because we're a district. Thus, in statute, the per capita rate is $1.85 per person. Last, for the last two years, that was not changed, but it was not funded at 100%. This year, for some reason, it was funded at 100%, with the statement that next year it's likely to be cut by approximately 11%. So the budget that our board has agreed to move to public hearing shows, has accommodated that anticipated decrease, so that we could keep our numbers conservative. We also get, we can get competitive grants, but we get some grants from the state, some of it is federal money that goes through the state and has to be distributed. So that's in the area of public health preparedness, and what is called a preventive health block grant, that we're for three years, given you can choose from these kinds of projects, what would benefit your community, and we move forward. And then we have our municipal per capita rate, which at $4.67, I think there's only one lower in the state, and starting July 1, if our budget passes, it will be, I believe, the fifth fiscal year that the per capita is being held steady, at $4.67. And then we have our fees, permit fees, licensing fees for those that we regulate. We are now tasked with providing the 10 Essential Services, which has only been adopted in Connecticut for, I, I want to say maybe about three years, maybe going on four years. And what's nice about the 10 Essential Services is that this is a federal standard, and so that's just a handy little graphic of it. It shows some areas where local health departments have been historically involved a lot, such as enforce laws, assuring a competent workforce, diagnosing and investigating public health issues as they arise. But there's new parts to it that really, that we're really supposed to do. And we're supposed to be a lot more active in developing policies, advocating for policy development, we'll be doing some of that through our opioid grant, and mobilizing community partnerships. And any of you that are involved in this day and age, and do, trying to do any kind of grant work, the number one key is, we don't want to just give Agency X a grant. Who are your partners? Who are you collaborating with? Did you just come around the table to try to get this grant money? Or do you have a working history together of what you've already done? And so I think as funding shrinks, there's an overarching goal to have everybody work together. And I think in some cases, a lot of good has come out of it. So local health departments have always worked well together, so even the four of us that have this new opioid grant, there's pieces of it, we're supposed to roll out a message, and we're already talking about, we're gonna negotiate, if we're doing radio spots, we're gonna negotiate those costs together. If we have to do billboard boards, if that's how we can reach people, we'll do those together to squeeze the value out of the dollar. So that's our 10 Essential Services. So North Central District Health Department, they were founded in 1974 with four initial member towns, East Windsor, Ellington, Enfield, and Windsor Locks. And currently, we serve eight towns, so we also have Stafford, Suffield, Vernon, and Wyndham. We serve the largest population in the state of Connecticut, about 166,000 residents. And it's, some of our towns increase a little bit every year, some, some of our towns decrease, it remains relatively stable. I think our numbers to use for next year are about 166,200 in that, in that area. We have a main office that's a stone's throw from here, and we have three satellite offices through the district, one's in Wyndham, one's in Stafford, and one is in Vernon. Currently, we have 14 full-time staff members and seven part-time staff members. We have, to kind of break it up for people who don't understand what a local health department does, I try to break it up into divisions, so I kind of say, we're administration, environmental health, community health, and public health preparedness. So administration, we're administered by a Board of Health. If all of our board positions are filled, we have a 21-member board, and I'm happy to say we have a very active participation and attendance at our board meetings. The board appoints a Director of Health. In the state of Connecticut, that person has to be a licensed physician or have a master's degree in public health. Once the board appoints the director, the authority to issue orders and take legal action that relates to the regulatory work we do comes directly from the Commissioner of Health. And so I have to do things like sign orders, notices of violation, and other activities that wouldn't be surprising to you, supervise staff, staff, grant management. Throughout the state, in Connecticut and other states, Directors of Health try to participate. Everybody kind of takes their fair share of work at the state level, work at the federal level as you can, because you want to really be present at those tables, because decisions are being made that are going to affect us at the local level. So in Connecticut, we have a pretty good group of dedicated Directors of Health, and so we try to share the workload. So currently at the state level, I serve on the committee about the annual report, trying to direct the state health department to ask us questions and ask us for data that relates to the 10 Essential Services, and not simply programmatic questions. So I work on that committee, on the state, I've served, NACO is our, our professional organization at the state, and I serve primarily on the Project Public Health Ready Review Team, which is we review plans, public health preparedness plans from, from other towns and other jurisdictions that are trying to get kind of an accreditation for their public preparedness plans. And it's a great way to learn a lot and to have a say in what the measures are going to be. We have other support staff and a bookkeeper, and we work, you know, we manage the facility, budgeting, HR, IT, insurance, purchasing, all the things that would be typical for an agency. In our environmental health section, I would say that most of the historically mandated tasks are done by environmental health. And at North Central, the agency has primarily been staffed by environmental health workers, which has been really good in some aspects, but in other aspects has limited us from reaching out and having a robust community health plan. So we currently have two senior management staff, who are registered sanitarians or health inspectors, you might call them, I am as well. We have four registered sanitarians and three and a half sanitarians who are not yet registered. And that's kind of their license from the state, so there's certain activities they can do and certain things they cannot do. Again, you probably know, you know, food inspections, cosmetology inspections, those things would occur to you. We regulate septic systems and wells, and inspect hotels, motels, public pools. We spend a lot of time in some of our towns doing housing inspections. So lately, there's been a lot of no heat complaints, as you can imagine. The rule seems to be do not call in a no heat complaint until after 3:00 on a Friday. Seems to be the unwritten rule, I'm not sure why. We do a lot of lead case follow-up. We currently have, in our health district, approximately 75 active cases of childhood lead poisoning we're following up on. So if you looked at one of our, one of our board packets and you saw the number 75, which was 87, I think a month or two ago, you would have no idea that probably hundreds of hours go into managing every one case, and it's not neat and tidy and wrapped up with a bow, it goes on and on and on. And we do a whole range of complaints. One sad thing about the lead cases, which are on the increase, is that this past year, our lead poisoning prevention funding was removed. It wasn't that we received a lot of funding, but it was enough for us to provide cleaning kits to families, and it might sound pretty basic, but people, some people don't know how to clean, they don't know how to clean in a way that will help prevent lead poisoning. And when you can offer to bring things, when you have something in your hand that you can give someone, it's a nice way of getting the person's buy-in and, and helping to educate them and work alongside them to prevent lead poisoning instead of respond to lead poisoning. In community health, I think this is where we've made the most strides lately. We had a part-time health educator that because of the opioid grant, which is a four-year grant, with the hope of funding after that, we were able to make that individual a full-time person, and we were able to hire a part-time public health nurse. And that is a huge change for the district. I would say that, you know, back around in the 80s, early 90s, most local health departments, aside from city health departments, were really focused on building permits, restaurant, cosmetology inspections, that sort of thing. And it's important that we do that and do it well. But in the late 90s, people and health departments started really moving more into the area of community health, and they really started assessing their populations and finding out what the priority health needs are. And we've had very limited way to even go out to our senior centers and do blood pressure screenings, and do fall prevention programs, which I think would be so important, our senior, our percentage of senior population is really on the rise. And so we really, we have training in that recently, and we hope to roll out those programs. We don't do any diabetes self-management programs, which isn't really preventing diabetes, but it, it will prevent people having more health effects from diabetes. So we really wanted to start addressing some of those things in our community. Health promotion, like I said, we started out this year doing some pilot vaccine programs. The Town of Enfield participated, we were able to get contracts with three health insurance companies, Connecticut Care, Aetna, and Cigna. And we have other towns who all have Anthem but wanted to participate, but we can't get an Anthem contract till we get our Medicare contract, which we will be moving forward. So if anybody doesn't have a flu shot, we still have some vaccine left, just give us a call, and we'd be happy to connect you with our nurse. Again, I already mentioned the opioid grant, and that has just really plugged us into a lot of groups in the region, and just any, any health issue where you're primarily looking at death data, is just really horrifying. On one hand, we're hearing how many lives are being saved, at least temporarily, by the use of Narcan. This is just every, when we talk to police officers, it's, you know, in some of our towns, it's every weekend, every weekend. But even with those saving people from overdoses, the, the death, the deaths are just, they're skyrocketing. What's interesting in our eight towns is that an early look at the data says that it's primarily white males, I think from age 21 all the way to mid-50s. And that's not enough to really give us, really give us a lot of direction, so that just gives us more questions, and we have to drill down and get some more data. And we don't have to do that alone. The University of Connecticut has been hired to do all the evaluation piece of the grant and work closely with us. In the state of Connecticut, different, different agencies in Connecticut are working to gather us data, so it's really, it's really a good partnership. Okay, I gotta get the right input on this. Okay, public health preparedness. We currently have one full-time staff, and we had a part-time staff person who left, so we pulled in a contractor to work with us, at least temporarily over this contract year. They have to write and maintain all of our preparedness plans, coordinate with Region 3, where most of our district is in Region 3, part of our district is in Region 4, which is a little more travel to meetings, but also gives us a whole lot more people to call on if something happens in one of our towns. So we have a lot more partners. But we have meetings that we have to attend, and it's a lot of face time and planning. And we have to participate in local, regional, and state training, planning, and drilling and exercising, which is going to, we're in a new five-year cycle for preparedness funding. And so I think we're going to culminate in some fairly large drills across our regions. The change in the way this is funded now is previously, the state health department would direct the funding down to individual health districts, our health departments. Now they fund what they have called, they have named, healthcare coalitions. So we're all going through a time of great change, because there's some concern about, in latter years of the contract, does it mean that North Central District gets its fair share, its per capita share of the money? Or is the coalition going to say, well, because the deliverables are more regional-based, you know, they're going to maybe decide on how a portion of our money is spent? So believe you me, we're very present at all those tables, so that our voice can be heard. And also, we want to do our fair share, because when we have any kind of a response, none of us are working alone. But it's just something to keep in mind, the funding has changed a bit. Oh, and that's all? Questions?
Thank you. Questions from members of the council? Deputy Mayor Susak?
Actually, it's a great presentation of what the health department does. And I guess my question is, you know, this always happens at budget time, you know, we're going to have our money in the health department. And do you actually track, I guess, I don't know, when you have fees and usage things come in from the different towns, do you track the need that you have to put your staff in these towns to do work and the amount of revenues that come from each of the work that you do within that town?
Well, all those numbers are there, I believe, in our database. It would be a matter of how we pull data to look at it, and that's something that I haven't specifically done yet in the two years I've been here, almost two years.
Well, because it'd be really good, like, at budget time, if we could say to, you know, other people, this is really a good deal for us to be in a regional, you know, health district. We're very large. We still get our economy of scale. So I think, you know, for us, that would be a really great, you know, comparison for us to have at budget time. Thank you.
Well, one interesting point along with that is, let's say, our preventive health block grant money. So for our whole population of 166,000, we get approximately $49,000. It's not very much. But we kind of scooch it together, what would be theoretically separated out in all our towns, right? So if it were separate in all of the eight towns, it would be less than $10,000 per town. And each of those eight towns, and this is just a super oversimplified example, each of those eight towns would have their reporting requirements that they would have to do. There would be an administrative piece of that that would be spent just on reporting. So I think sometimes, by being able to kind of pull all those funds together, we can get a little more depth, and we can actually try to get a little more done. But I see your point.
Right. And also with that, that would let us know, you know, are you staffed adequately enough so that you can cover all these towns?
Right.
I think that, you know, we might, you know, in Enfield, we have a lot of businesses. And I know Vernon has a lot of businesses as well, but there might not be, in some of the other towns that are less developed, they might not have the business need that we have. So some sort of an analysis like that would be really helpful to all the towns in the area. And then they would feel, you know, that they understand how everything is being distributed and what the benefits are to us as a town. Thanks.
Right. You bring up a good question about being adequately staffed, because we believe, and again, it would be a Herculean task to really pull together all the data, because you're comparing, so could we say, how long on average does it take to do a complaint? Well, the reality is, it could take a half an hour. Or like, one really, really challenging heating complaint we had, it could take 200 hours. So we can, you know, some of it, we have to make some assumptions about it to get to a place where we're not pulling our hair out, but we get some kind of data. We think, senior management believes, without drilling down in an adequate level at the data, that this community as a whole would be best served by two additional full-time sanitarians. However, the state made a huge change. They're shifting from the Connecticut State Food Code to the FDA Model Code. And the FDA Model Code requires a lower number of inspections for certain food facilities. So as we go to this transition, which is supposed to be in place July 1, we wanted to get staff transition to it and see, before we start trying to even ask or put together figures for another position, does it reduce, does it reduce what our need is? Because we do try to be fiscally very conservative. The problem long-term, not problem, but the reality is, is that there's some special processes that the state health department is handling those applications now. But once they transition us to the FDA Food Code for some period of time, we don't know what that is, then they said they're going to put the special process applications, it's for special food preparation processes, back down to us. So we don't know if we're going to have a dip in need, and then is it going to go back up to where it previously was, or is it going to be even more? So we're really trying to watch and see. And every time, you kind of think you get a handle on one thing, you know, the state changes, the federal guidelines change, and we're trying to keep up with that.
And I guess just one more question is, I noticed you own your own building. Do you feel that ownership of buildings is better than leasing?
I think there's benefits to both, actually. I think that there's a freedom, when you're in your own building, that internally you can make the changes to accommodate your needs at that time. But I've been in other positions in lease situations that worked really well, and I've been in municipal buildings that work really well. So I think, I think there's pros and cons in both ways.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counselor.
So on your way out, if you could see Joan, I think our board could use a health educator on our, so recruit at the same time. They have meetings on every first Tuesday, so she can give you the location. At 7:30, we'd love to have your health educator come and join us for a couple of our meetings and maybe do some collaboration.
I brought business cards, so I'll make sure I get the right people.
Thank you.
Counselor.
Thank you for your presentation. Very informative. Getting back to your, the section with community health and, you know, with your opioid grant that you did receive, has your nurse had any tracking experience to people who have OD'd and, you know, the use of Narcan? And have you had any experiences yet in tracking these people for their recovery?
We don't have that data yet, and our nurse, she's kind of new to the public health world. She's been a hospital nurse, and she's actually finishing up her APRN. So if we can keep her, she'll be a great resource for us. But we were forming an advisory group from each of our member towns for the grant, and we've reached out to EMT, a couple of EMT. I believe that the EMT chief in Enfield is going to serve
Okay, great.
...on our advisory group to start pulling that data. And like I said, we're in the beginning of the grant, and it's sort of like come down really fast on us. So we're gathering, we're getting data from the state at the same time that we're due a report to give them data back from the state. So we're a little bit building the airplane while we're flying it, but we have some good people who are going to provide that. And, you know, and we actually have a paramedic, an EMT on our board.
Excellent. Thank you. With eight towns, I think with the collaboration, I think you could make a difference.
Yeah. Thank you.
Do you see a trend, so there's a trend in the healthcare industry where they're delivering care more at the, you know, at the local level? So more where insurance companies are rewarding providers and, you know, CNAs, where they're actually delivering care in the home or at the local level? Is that something you notice, so with the eight towns? You mentioned you work with the insurance company, so is that something for you folks? Because it sounded like you're not doing as much regulation compared, maybe in the past, you're doing more outreach and more, you know, again, the opioid, you know, grant. Is that a trend you're seeing? And is that something, you know, you mentioned you work with a state, but I know we have some obviously large insurance companies in the state. I know that's a trend. Is that something you're seeing through the health department?
Right. And I believe what triggered that is that, a few years ago, the feds put out to states, you know, offer us, make another model of how to deliver healthcare,
Right.
...because clearly what we have is not working.
Right.
And Connecticut was one of the states that was awarded a large, what seems to me, anyway, like a large amount of money to work on what they call the SIM project. And I attended some of those SIM meetings, and about, it's like your healthcare home, and everybody's supposed to be linked with everybody else, and you see changes going on with the hospitals are becoming bigger, and the physicians' offices are kind of more, you know,
Right.
...being a part of the hospital. And what they're trying to do is use CNAs, but also, one important piece of the SIM project is to get what they call community health workers,
Right.
...which typically don't have the same level of education as a nurse or a CNA, but they're people, they're supposed to be trusted members of the community that they come from, that are trained a little bit so that they can go get Joe, who's supposed to go for his walk a day, and say, come on, Joe, let's go out, I'm going to walk with you. And they're supposed to really have an insight into the community. I worked for a short time on that project, and I think that there's a lot to it. Also, the cost is much less.
Right.
I've said to the state, if you ever want to try to model some community health workers through a department, here I am. Give us a call, we'll be happy to work with you. They really have to be adequately supervised. But when there was training going on for community health workers, what happened is, they weren't actually those people, trusted people from the community that know the culture, that know the language, that know where people hang out, where the places to go are. And so they're just, you know, regular people who think, well, I might be good at that job. And so the more they try, they try to kind of put some boundaries and define and put some regulation and requirements around what a community health worker is, which there could be good to that. But what they're losing on the other side of that is that the community health workers aren't really coming like those trusted members. I think one of you said it during the previous presentation, hey, you know, you go to the high school and find out who those kids are that people go to when they're in trouble, right? So it's kind of like that kind of theory, but for a community. There's so much more that can be built through local health departments. Old data, I don't have current figures, old data used to say, for every dollar you spend on prevention, you're saving about $14 in medical care. I would suggest that's probably, there's probably a lot more
Right.
...that you're saving. And the key is, the key primarily is those people who use the emergency room
Right.
...as their primary care physician.
Right.
And that drives up costs, and we're all paying those costs, whether we see it or not.
Yes, you are, yes.
It's in our premium, it's in our copay, and people aren't getting healthier.
Right.
But if we can do glucose screening, and, you know, we can do fall prevention, and we're out there doing other things, so we're engaged all the time with our, with our public education system and with our seniors and with people in all different aspects of the community, then, then, just like with the opioid thing, we start to get a little synergy, and then things start happening, and it doesn't cost everybody lots of money to do it separately if everybody's just around the same table.
Right. I mean, you can see the Minute Clinic's popping up around, I mean, where you have CVS right across the street, I mean, those are delivering care at a cheaper, much cheaper rate, right at, you know, right in the community. And my last question, so we have eight towns in the North Central District. So I guess, to me, that would, seems to be regional. So what is the definition of the state's regionalization? So meaning, how far are they trying to consolidate the districts?
Well, that whole plan is off the table, so I don't know if they're retooling, and then something else is going to be presented in a couple of years. But they were talking about a couple of models, either the counties, doing it county level, which a lot of the country is, or doing it counties but separating out the big cities as standalone departments. So there were a couple of different ideas suggested. Interestingly enough, they were saying they were going to start up at our end of the state with the health districts that already exist, and we're like, we're already doing this. Why don't you start, start with your part-time health departments, if you feel like you need to make a change? And we're saying, you know, don't, don't break us apart and put us together the way you want. These are, these are things that are, that people decided to be a part of. And there would be, there would be significantly less local voices if the districts were huge. And then there would be, there would be a lot of middle management. You know, I'm not saying that there aren't things that could be achieved, but things that we've asked the state health department to do for years. For instance, get a common software platform for us just all to use. You at the state level, even, I'll say it quietly, take a little bit of our per capita each and put it all together, and you do that at the state level. Instead, everybody's working on their own to do something. So it's, you know, it really needs to be well thought out, and, you know, salaries across the state and everything. There would be a lot to figure. But at this point, at this point, they're not talking about doing that. What I believe insulates us is if we can do it well and really offer a broad sense of those eight essential services well, it helps to insulate us from some of the
Right.
...impact of them saying they need to kind of fix us. Just my opinion.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 7, public communications. Would anyone like to speak before the council? Sir?
Art Cody, president of the Friends Enfield Senior Center. Just a quick update. Our records have been located, thank you. They're in a town that I'm currently being taken care of by a town manager, thank you for not taking them out and burning them or something. Where our relationship is, we're working on a different relationship between the town and the group. Hopefully, it'll be smoothed out, and things will work out better for everybody. Other comments I'd like to make, if, I would strongly advise other groups like the Friends to know who they are legally and to whom they're responsible to. Third, to work out a relationship with the town that is much more than a wink and a nod or just a verbal agreement, in that I think a lot of the problems we had were, agreements were worked out between town members of the group and members of the town, and it all looked fine until town members change, group members change, and nobody knows what the agreement is. Or it's all interpreted differently. So hopefully, as we work out our agreement, things will work out much more smoothly, and in the long run, everybody will be happier. And the second subject I'd like to speak to as a citizen at 103 Middle Road is, if the CNA has not been returned to the bus, I would suggest it be returned to the bus, there's no reason to increase the risk of the individuals served and the town workers who serve them or provide the service. People who use the adult they serve are not there for a wide, are there for a wide range of reasons, which the vehicle operator should not have to deal with as he's moving that vehicle with passengers around the streets of Enfield. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Just before, sorry, a quick reminder, five minutes, I'll give you 30 seconds before. Sorry, you were good. You were good this time, and again, we appreciate if you refrain from personalities. Yes, sir?
Joshua Hamery, 52, New King Street. And I wanted to follow up on the issue I brought up here two weeks ago regarding the furnace, my boiler, and the lack of assistance that I got through Enfield Community Development. Some of you were included on the email chain because you were initially included in it. Some of you were added based on your responses from the last time I spoke to you about it. The director for Enfield Community Services Development, rather, and I believe I'm getting the title right, sent me an email the following day. So coincidence or not, I don't know if So coincidence or not, I don't know if it was the fact that I came here to speak to you or not, but the email said essentially, "Here's a list of reasons why you were not approved for the program." And if anybody could, that has received the email, recall it. I think I did a fairly good represent, job of pointing out that everything that was given as reasons for our denial for the grant, the loan, loan program was based on the fact that we were denied initially by the department using their faulty numbers. As a quick side note, those numbers are in fact updated on the application now. They are now using 2017 guidelines for their income qualifications. Again, as I said for the first time I sat in front of you for this issue, I don't expect anything to come of it because it's too late for us, as the director has made very clear. And has the person at the state level that runs the program and that finances those community development block grants. So too late for us, but I can speak for, with relative certainty that there are other families that are experiencing situations in very close parallels to what we've gone through, that are hesitant to contact the department for reasons that they don't want to incur the situation. They don't want to go through what we went through. So that's my issue for tonight at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Eric Coran of 293 Elm Street. I am here as a resident of the town of Enfield and as a president of the Enfield Police Employees Association to speak on matters of public concern. We as a union feel that recent cuts to our department over the past year and a half has recklessly put our citizens and our officers in danger. I know that the opioid crisis in the country, and specifically in Enfield, is a top priority for you as a council. I'm here to report to you today that last year there were 19 overdose deaths in the town of Enfield and at least 103 Narcan uses by our EMS, not including uses by police and fire. This number is expected to increase steadily over the next five years, and one of the top components to combating this crisis is through enforcement. I can say however, that due to our staffing shortage, our efforts and response as a department has been extremely limited with little to no impact. Sure, our officers make drug arrests when we pull over a vehicle and see paraphernalia or contraband in plain view, but those arrests are of the users and not of the dealers or suppliers. In order to arrest the dealers and suppliers, we need resources, manpower, training and equipment. We had a regional drug team that was highly effective, but disbanded because of budget cuts. Overall, the lack of targeted enforcement can lead to increasing crimes such as larcenies, break-ins of both homes and vehicles, robberies, et cetera. Not too long ago, we were budgeted for 101 officers, when to my amazement, it was reduced to 95 officers with five more positions frozen, which puts us at 90 officers, not including officers that are out for injuries, military leave, pregnancies and other reasons. In addition to cuts of staffing, all of our non-mandated training has been cut. This training has been critical for maintaining our superior level of service that we can provide to our community. I think that it is reasonable to expect that without hiring more officers and reinstating our training, that even more people will die from overdoses next year. So how many people have to die before we stop the bleeding from the police department? I know another important goal of this council is to revitalize Thompsonville. Over the past few years, we have conducted walking patrols in the Thompsonville area that have been praised equally by the residents and business owners. Since we do not have a community, excuse me, since we do not have a community police division anymore because of budget cuts, this was a great way for us to build relationships with the business owners and the residents. As I'm sure you know, the walking patrols have been cut. So how do you plan on revitalizing Thompsonville and making it a safe place to live and do business when you pull the police off the streets? With our reduction in staffing, training and equipment, it is difficult for us to maintain our quality of police services to the community. We have seven patrol districts in town with one officer assigned to each district. Since being cut 11 officers, we've had to reduce the minimum number of officers on our midnight shift from seven down to six. This means on any given night, there's an area of town that does not have an officer assigned to patrol it. National FBI recommendations say that a town our size and with our demographics should have 117 officers. We currently have 90, which were the staffing levels we had back in 1988, 30 years ago. In conclusion, our department has taken over 10% cut across the board with budget and staffing. This bleeding needs to stop. We need to hire more officers, not get rid of more. We need more training, not less. We need up-to-date equipment and not just deal with what we have. If you can do this for us, the deaths can go down. The larcenies can go down. The break-ins can go down. Robberies can go down. But more importantly, public safety and public trust in us will go up. I also want to take a minute and discuss a hiring process for the chief of police and say that we as a union fully endorse the candidate, Colonel Alaric Fox, to be our next chief of police. He would be insurmountable to the betterment of the police department and to the town as a whole. With that being said, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I appreciate this opportunity to stand before you and speak. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak before the council? Gina?
Good evening. I'm here tonight to address some of the questions that I asked at the last town council meeting. I asked when the positions of Director of Senior Center and Adult Day Center would be filled. Our town manager answered the question by saying there is, quote, "Plan to provide interim director appointments in the near future," end quote. And then he directed me back to town council. So if anyone tonight can provide some information on that, that would be great. When I asked about the Friends of the Library address being that of the Enfield Public Library on the website and why the Friends of the Senior Center couldn't use the Senior Center address, I was told by the town manager, quote, "The town attorney's office was concerned with the Friends of the Senior Center listing the Senior Center as their incorporate business address. Yes, the Friends of the Library use the Central Library as their mailing address and the library collects and holds mail, FedEx, UPS for the Friends of the Library." And that the town is more than willing to reestablish a mailbox to collect and hold mail, FedEx, UPS for the Friends of the Senior Center, end quote. And that's, that's great. But the Friends of the Library also list membership fees on the public website, the library public website, and directs people to submit payments to the library address. So I was wondering, could it be possible for the Friends of the Enfield Senior Center to have the same presence on the Enfield Senior Center website with an address that donations could be sent to? I then asked about the town manager's role in the ECDC as executive director. I was told by the town manager, he will be resigning as executive director effective February 2nd. Thank you for this information. I am sharing this answer for the sole purpose of letting the public watching know that you are resigning from your position with ECDC and I appreciate this information. Since the question has been raised about nonprofits and what they can and cannot do with taxpayer funds, I did ask again about the 4th of July town celebration and I was told this by the town manager, quote, "The town provides those items as in-kind services in support of the 4th of July festival," end quote. The definition of in-kind services is providing a service in lieu of monetary payments. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but the police officers, for example, are not working for free during the 4th of July weekend. So the town is paying a monetary amount of probably overtime in the range of maybe $50,000 to provide police presence at the event. This still seems like a contradiction to what is being told to us about the rules for the Friends of the Enfield Senior Center. It also seems contradictory based on the town manager's response, quote, "The town must look to reduce expenses through service reductions and increase revenues, direction which can only come from town council." As such, I have advised council to take a comprehensive look at the town's operational expenses, revenues and programming in an effort to establish a long-term plan to provide the appropriate level of service and corresponding revenue in the future," end quote. So if we cut costs across the board, I would think these in-kind donations would also have to be looked at. Because if we couldn't spend $2,000 of budgeted and approved money for volunteers at the Senior Center, how can we afford almost $50,000 for a nonprofit event? Any clarification that you guys could provide on that would be wonderful. I was also told by the town manager, quote, "I acknowledge that there's an absence of written policy to provide staff the appropriate and clear direction on the equality and limitation of services and support the town should provide to civic groups within the community," end quote. So since there is a lack of written policy at this time, why would the Friends of the Senior Center, Enfield Senior Center be singled out? Shouldn't the town have waited until a policy was put into place and then reach out to these nonprofit organizations and work, and then work with them?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. I want to know what's going on with the aid on the bus, if there's any information. And I've been, I've been thinking a lot about the fate of the Enfield Adult Day Center. I feel very uneasy at this point because of the lack of information that's out there. I realize I may sound like a broken record in regards to the Enfield Adult Day Center, but the center is just that important to our town. We have a wonderful service here that I would hate to see go away. As a family member of a former client at the Enfield Adult Day Center, I will always advocate for this service as it gave my mom, a resident of Enfield, for over 50 years, two extra years of independent living before she had to go into a nursing home due to dementia. Our elder residents that have faithfully paid taxes in our town deserve this service. Thanks.
Ma'am.
Judy Keltie, 83 Abbey Road. Just a couple of comments. Push it, Gina? Jeez. After reading the 64 pages of minutes that were in, included with the minutes to be approved tonight, I would really like to applaud Suzanne Olnecki and anyone else who helps in this preparation. The detail involved and matters presented were concise and very detail oriented. I just wanted to say, great job. There's so much information here and it gave me a much clearer picture of what's happening and why there is such concern on all our budget issues. I did notice several times various council members asked why they were not advised of these difficult issues before now, which is, one of the major problems that I believe we have so much of is, is zero communication. We come up here week after week and we ask questions and we just hope for answers and we don't get answers. We get, we'll look into that, I don't know, but never any answers. I believe that so much of the negativity voiced by residents in the past few months could have been avoided to a great extent if only the town manager would be willing to be more open with his communications. Even though my questions are, they tend to go unanswered, I still have another one. With your current hiring freeze, exactly how many positions, aside from the two directors of the daycare center and the senior director, have gone unfilled and what if any work is not being done? And of course, now I want to add to that, how long can you let this town go without police officers that they need, that we need? And they are, they are our protection against everything that could happen to our town. And I think every position is important, but our police officers, they deserve better, much better than this. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak before the council? For a second time? Thank you. I declare public communications closed. Item nine, excuse me, item eight, council communications, Council Bosco.
Okay. I'm going to open my mouth. I'm going to stick my foot in it. I apologize to anybody that may get insulted in what I'm going to say. And please don't take what I'm going to say incorrectly. We'll start off with the budget. This year is going to be a terrible, terrible budget. If you think what's coming, think it's going to be that much worse. There is no money. The first thing that you got to remember, we're not 5 million short, we're realistically 7 million short, at least in my opinion, because we're short five from the state. And then we had budgeted for another 250,000 that we don't have. So if my numbers are somewhat correct, we're looking at a 5 mil increase to keep at the same place we are today. So if anyone thinks that we're just kidding, we're just joking, we're not filling positions, this council was the one that charged Brian with, to tighten up on anything it possibly can so we don't have to send out a supplemental 5 mil increase to everybody in the town. So I'm sitting here and I'm hearing, "Why aren't people replaced?" The reason why we have to make up $7 million, it's either that or we do like other towns and we go back and we say, "We're going to give you another tax bill." So Brian's been getting beat up for something that he has been in total agreement with the town council. The only problem and the only thing that Brian did wrong is he took it upon himself to try to shield us from making the tough decisions when we were the ones that directed him what to do. And yes, he should have looked at policy first and whatever before he made his decisions, but you know what? They're done. And because of that, everyone's going to be thankful in the end that we're not going to all get a 5 mil increase at the end of the year. If we do nothing and keep it the same way as it is today, people expect a 5 mil increase next year. That's not expecting pay increases or anything like that. I'm sick of hearing the $2,000 for Susan Lather for the Senior Center ice cream social. Think about this. We got screwed by Dan Malloy. It was not us that said, "We're going to go and write our budget $7 million short." Dan Malloy was the one who gave us the tax decrease or the income decrease from the state. So when we sat there at the last budget, we all sat and we did what we thought was best. And what was best up until that time was, take what the governor put down here for numbers, and usually you're pretty safe on doing that. So that's what we did. And that was our mistake. And it wasn't our mistake, but we took word of other people that been doing this a long time since they never cut the governor's budget. Well, guess what? He cut his. So now this $2,000 for the ice cream and the money for the social service director and all the other stuff that's been cut, think about this, we were giving, given a bad check from the state of Connecticut. There is no $2,000. So just as we expected to have $7 million in our coffers, it got pulled from us. So we had to do the tough decision to start cutting every nickel, dime and, and things. Now, I hear complaints from people that they have to go through the town manager's office for $13 of spending. Well, I really appreciate that because you know what that means? He's doing his job and he's protecting everyone in the town of Enfield from a 5 mil increase. And that's what we're looking at, everybody. Now, I don't, now, again, I'm going to go back now to the PD. Do I think we need more cops? Absolutely. Because we're only spending the money for the extra cops and overtime. But the 101 figure for the police officer never was a realistic number. Because when I was on the council back, oh, probably eight years ago, maybe a little, maybe a little less, when we decided to put in the, the, well, what is that when they, the, no, when they put the further retirements and then they, they, yeah, the drop plan. We had put extra police. We had put extra police officers then, because we knew that if three police officers were going to leave, there was going to be one year to get the other one trained. That's when the numbers went up from the police department to the 101. So, yes, we do need the police officers, we desperately need them. But again, we can only do what we can afford. And let me tell you, every department, every people, you're going to see things, and this budget's going to make your skin crawl. But if we don't put everything on that wall, including things that are very tough and very hard, good to our heart, that we really want to keep, we're not going to be doing the residents of Enfield any service. You know, I don't want to be seeing people lose their jobs. I don't want to see services cut. But listen, this is reality. So if anyone here wants to pay five mils to stay status quo, then you know what? Maybe we need the extra aides, maybe we need the directors in there on things that are working right now. But the realistically part of it is, we don't have the money. This time is not blowing smoke up everyone's butt to try to get a negotiation. Just go to the state. It's not just Enfield, it's every single 169 communities in the state of Connecticut, except Hartford, because they got extra money. But in the meantime, they got our money. And the sad part is, Enfield took a bigger hit because we did a good job. We kept the taxes at a reasonable rate, and we kept our piggy bank with money in it. So what the governor do, he goes and robs our money. So we have a little bit of funds in our fund balance that we may be able to play with, but it's no different than your house. As soon as you have a little bit of savings and you say, you know what? I'm going to reach into my savings because I really think this is important. And you pull that money out. And then next month, something else is there, and you pull that money out. Well, eventually, you don't have any money in the saving, there's no kitty to go back to. And what's going to happen is, we are going to lower our bond rating, and we are going to give the money to the people with the bonds. Because if the bond rating goes up, the interest rate goes higher, which means we're throwing money into things that we're not getting anything out of. So we can't touch that money in fund balance. It has to stay at where it's going to need to stay to, to keep us floating. And of course, you know, we could have another storm Alfred and then really be in trouble if we spend our, our fund balance down, because now we don't have the money to, to clear the roads or, or fix something that breaks, or the boiler breaks down at the school and replace it. So all I'm just trying to say, I don't want to sound like a jerk, and I don't want to sound like I'm talking down to anybody, but I'm telling you this, we are in big trouble. And what happens is, we keep trying to play it down to make it sound like, you know, Chicken Little, the sky is falling, but the sky has fallen. And this town of Enfield will not look the same with programs and stuff in, in the next budget season as it does today. And yeah, hey, you know what? If you want it, we can do it. It's very easy for us. Raise your, raise, raise your taxes five mils. And then here to screaming. So you put us here to do something and, and watch out for the best interest of the majority of the town of Enfield residents. And with that being said, we are gonna, we are going to do some cuts that are going to hurt. They're gonna, they're not even going to hurt, they're going to sting. But in the end, we will come back as a stronger community. So I, I, I know I probably just offended a bunch of people. I know there's people out there calling me names right now, but you know what? It is the truth. And the people need to hear the truth. And then we can all sit down, figure out what we're going to save, what programs we're going to keep, which ones we're going to get rid of, how we're going to do our work weeks, whatever we have to do, so we can all live in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Bosco. Council Nolan.
So this council hasn't done anything yet, and we actually have our budget meeting Wednesday. So we're starting to look at this problem Wednesday. So everything's happened from this point on, yes, we've had a lot of input on it, we've heard it. Some of us are happy with it, some of us aren't. But still, a lot of this problem has been Enfield's problem. Our fund balance is 23, 22, 23 million dollars. And even if we spend down eight million of that monies, we're still going to have a great bond rating. So when we walk into our budget meetings come Wednesday, to me, that's, that's a new day. Because now we're going to look at each and every department line by line and do our due diligence and our job from that point on. I'm looking forward to that, and it's open to the public, and you can all come in, be a part of it, too. This is the beginning of where we have a say in where these, where these budgets are going to actually end up in the end. And I'm looking forward to that. I truly believe that we do need buffer and time to look at these and not get into drastic cuts throughout the town, where we're dismantling everything that me and my forefathers have achieved in this town. That I do not want to happen. We have to take these slow, and we have to take them line by line. And that's what you'll see from us Wednesday. Thank you.
Council Fall.
On a different note, on the, the train station, I had watched a video last week pertaining to what the state of Connecticut had done all the way from New Haven all the way to Springfield. And they're using Meriden as the showcase example of what the train station can do for a community. And Meriden has not only put the train station in, but they've achieved residential housing around the train station. They've incorporated a park that's big enough to have band concerts and things on, really nice. And they've incorporated the commercial community in that as well. So I was hoping that you could convey to the, Michael, to have the P and Z, I think they are working on this, but to take into account these three factors in changing the zoning to incorporate those kind of activities in the core area around the train station. Another question I had, or issue I have, is the River Access Project. Recently attended the Economic Development Commission meeting, and Peter was showing the proposal, and he threw out a, a, a big number to finish that project. And he had indicated that it would require a referendum. I'm, I don't know from a legal standpoint whether we can break that project down into smaller pieces instead of doing it all in one physical year, do it over multiple years and keep the dollar amounts below the level for a referendum. I don't know if that's possible or not. Where you bank money one year, and then you bank money the next year, and then bank money the following year, so that you can do a project without a referendum and still be legal. Last item, I know we beat to death the senior center and the Friends of the Senior Center and what they can't do, and I was hoping that we as a town could, and I think I heard inklings of that tonight, work with that group and tell them what we can do for them to help them out and make it a viable group that will support the senior center in a fashion similar to what they've been doing right along. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Suzak.
I just have a few things. Joey, you're a tough act to follow. But it has to be said. And, you know, I guess we've, there's been a lot of talk about this neighborhood loan and all that stuff, and we did get the letter. And in that letter, you know, there's the LTV, which is the loan to value ratio. And that was, for me, the number one reason why that was denied. Yes, we had wrong figures in there for the income, but it's the loan to value ratio. And that's really, if we don't keep our fund balance up, we're not going to be looking like a strong community that anyone's going to want to lend money to. So that's another reason why we all got to look at those kind of things, that we have to plan, put money ahead, and do different things. But away from money, I guess, Brian, I sent, we talked a little bit this morning on the Fermi lights, and we're working on, how do we get the Fermi lights not to be on when the courts are covered with snow and nobody's paying, playing tennis? So that being said, I know they're on, I see them on, we're working on it. I don't know how to fix it, other than with a shotgun. So the trucks on North Street, okay. You know, we go over this over and over and over again, and I can't understand why a truck comes off of 190, turns onto Elm Street, can't make the corner, except he drives the school bus into the other lane. His school bus can't see where he's going, I can't see where he's going, but yes, we can get on North Street so we can take some little shortcut. It's like, it's not easier if you can't make the turn.
190's not a good turn either.
I know it's not, but they need to work on the 190 turn. But it's, it's this, we kind of somehow get a balance where we get, we're not saying you can't drive on our small residential streets, but why don't you drive on our bigger residential streets? And I know in that I'm asking for more truck traffic in front of my house. And the other thing is, you didn't mention, Lori, Peter and I, we went to, to the tour of the Willard and the Sobolski Prison up on the hill. And I guess for me, we have a really good program there, and getting the inmates back for life on the outside, in the outside world, is critical. And the staff is really positive with all the things, and their, their coordination with us, NUNTAC, to get into the machine shop training is just phenomenal. So there's a lot of good things going on up there. And I guess, for me, what I took away from this is that, for everything we do, education and the ability to take care of yourself is key in making good decisions in life. Thanks.
Council Agar.
On a lighter note, earlier this month, the Explorers had their award ceremony, and several of us were in attendance there. And I just wanted to compliment them and say what a great group of young people, some wonderful young men and ladies participated and received awards. I think, was it Mr. Pedemani that was the emcee and, and ran that whole thing? It was, it was a great night. And I'll tell you what, the Mount Carmel food is amazing. Anytime I get an invitation to attend something there, I'm there, because it's, it's awesome. So congratulations to all the families and the Explorers that were there. It was a great night. And Donna mentioned, we took the prison tour. That was very, very interesting. I learned a lot. Donna mentioned the machine program, it's the machine ed program, and I guess they had 17 participants in that. And out of the 17, 16 actually graduated and got really good jobs, and, and the one that didn't had unfortunately passed away. So it, it's, the program's working, and so it was nice to hear some positive things come out of that. Thanks.
Council Muller.
Through the mayor to the town manager, I would like to submit eight letters supporting Dawn Homer Booth Yett into public record. I'd like to thank Mark Gar and his team for doing an excellent job getting the temporary boiler going at JFK. They faced some hurdles. I had a question on the PAR, will the stage lights at Crandall and Hazerville Memorial be changed to LED lights? And an update on the LED lights in the center of Hazerville, there's still like five that haven't been changed yet. Thank you.
So Brian, we get to your report.
Thank you.
Council Grisati.
I'd like to thank the people that came up and spoke tonight. Mr. Haran from the Police Department, head of the Police Union, thanks for coming up and sharing us with the information about the police officers, with your cuts to the staffing, cuts to training. And I'm a firm believer in you in terms of revitalization of Thompsonville. I totally agree with you about the walking patrol and your patrol people to be developing relationships with the residents down in Thompsonville, that you're going to mean some business down there. And I think that that's something that has to really take place. You know, we can talk about the train station, and we can talk about the River Access Project, and we can talk about the Strand Theater, we can talk about every single project that probably was, you know, brought up back in the early 2000s. And here we are in 2018, and we haven't seen any of that take place yet. However, it is very important that we take control of revitalizing down there with that walking patrol. I totally agree with you on that. And I, and I do agree with the training and everything. We will be sitting down and discussing budget tomorrow. So I just wanted to give you a shout out to that. And thank you for your endorsement of your Police Union on the, on the new chief. That was, thank you for that information also. On another note, I would like to get a little update through the mayor to the town manager. You know, what is the, on the transit center about the environmental testing? Is that on the, is that, you know, going to be taking place soon?
Is that on the PAR, Brian? You can, isn't that part of the PAR? I thought I saw something on there. So he can address that.
Okay, he's going to be addressing that. Okay, great. Okay. And also, is part of that, the environmental testing, it's going to be the site assessment studies for the Strand Theater also? Is that a part of that report? No? Okay, so I'd like an update on that. Update on the Route 5 traffic signal at Enfield High School. And I also heard that the, thinking about taking the light off of Moody Road. I think that was an issue that was possibly brought up also.
That can be addressed in PAR as well, and there's no one here suggesting that light comes off. So Brian, please address that. Again.
All right, thank you. So also, I just want to let everybody know on another note, I did attend the Commission on Aging meeting. New officers were selected. President David Goyette was very informative at this meeting with Alice Egan and the treasurer, Tim Slade. Things that were discussed, like the senior home repair program, I think is very important, grandparents raising grandchildren, the group that educates seniors on how to be safe, the TRIA program, and that's in conjunction with the Police Department and Fire Department. I mean, these are all projects and things that, that are through the Commission on Aging. Even the Commission on Aging had discussed to act as a buffer between the senior, the Friends of the Senior Center group, Department of Social Services, and with the town, to act, you know, if we could act as a, a buffer to make everybody's, you know, situations a little better. They have a nursing home project where, with Alice Egan, that, you know, they went to Little Sisters of the Poor Parkway during the holidays for people that don't have anybody. They made things for them, they visited them, they, they, you know, were interactive with them, made small gifts for them, and they were very appreciative of it. This Commission talks about quite a bit. They talked about a transportation survey, about the quality of life for seniors. Now, ally transportation does take care of medical concerns, so if anybody out in the community, you know, has medical issues and has to deal with getting around town, you know, get in contact with ally transportation, because they do service medical needs. You know, they're doing surveys about, you know, seniors, do they use taxis, the Dial-A-Rite program, Magic Carpet. So they're, you know, they're, they're out there, and there's a lot of services that are, that are offered with them. And also, they're working in conjunction with the Department of Social Services. They have energy assistance programs, adult, adult daycare, and we've had our issues with the, the, you know, CN on the, for the bus. So I just thought it was a, a good meeting that, that I did attend, and I will be attending all of those meetings, and it was a proactive meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Nolan Gar.
I just wanted to mention that earlier this month at the Explorers ceremony, that the Explorers presented Chief Carl Sforazo with a beautiful plaque, thanking him for all his involvement and all that he's contributed to that fine group. It was a very
It was a very heartwarming moment in the night. So I just wanted to mention that.
Counselor Bosco.
Through the mayor to the town manager, I'd like to know what went on with the pothole over on Post Office Road. Now, I, I know we have a time of the year that we don't cut into roads. And somehow, I think this road got cut after that time. And it wasn't repaired properly. And I want to know why. I mean, I could be mistaken, and maybe it was done at the right time. But I believe it was done way too late, because I believe all the blacktop plants were closed. And from what I can understand, there had been about 10 cars that hit it. I, I think we had to tow four of them away. And I know Fox Hill was out there towing them away. They substant, they got substantial damage on them. And the problem is, like it says, I don't think it should have been opened up. And we have a couple spots, you know, it was Freshwater Boulevard, that got opened up late. I don't know if that was within the timing. There, I don't know what happened on Route 5, but Route 5 washed away. Town Farm Road, I mean, Post Office Road washed away. And it shouldn't have happened. The road shouldn't have been cut, you know, other than emergencies. But I guess my next question is, is did they put flowable fill in that hole when they did the, the road? Because from what I understand, I went and looked, but you can't tell how deep it is. And I wasn't going to stick a stick in it. They, they said it was pretty deep. And, you know, I would think that if they put the flowable fill, it probably wouldn't have gotten so deep. I could be mistaken. But I just want to make sure the contractors, if we have something that they're supposed to do, that when they open up a road, they're doing what they're supposed to do. And especially on a case like that, when it's coming so late in the year. So I just expect to get an answer for that. Thank you.
Counselor Denny.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody that came tonight, especially the police. You know, I'm in your, in your background, public safety to me is one of the number one things that goes on here in Enfield. There's a lot of doom and gloom out there, and I don't believe it's as bad as it is. You want to believe whatever you want. I think we can handle this year's budget with our funds that we already have, make up a few cuts, instead of alienating every department, every senior citizen, every social 501(c) organizations and so forth and so on. I want to make an announcement that there's an award ceremony Thursday night at Mount Carmel for the police awards at 6 o'clock at night. It should be a great time. Second, the last thing I want to know is, those letters that you're submitting, I, I don't want them going into public, what do you call it? Because half of them are, have been written by people who work for those individuals. And I think it's bullshit.
Watch your mouth. Watch your mouth. Being submitted. You're going to have the opportunity, by the way, to be able to, whatever you want to fund, you're going to have the opportunity to do that. So whatever you want to fund, you're going to have to either come up with a cut or willing for a tax increase. You're going to have that opportunity. You'll have, everyone will have that opportunity. So when you get up here and say you support something, you're going to have that opportunity. You know, and again, I support the police as well. I want to have the bikes in Thompsonville. But I also am going to have to cut something if I don't want a $2 million increase. So I'm going to have to cut something to do that. And we're going to be upfront about it. We're going to be honest about it. And I want to clarify a few things. The bond rating question, when you get to the par, please clarify it. We've already reached out to the Moody's. They're watching what we're doing. And if we don't have expense reductions, they will reduce our bond rating. And, you know, so we have a great bond rate, we've earned it. But you reduce that bond rating, now you're talking about another $400,000 to $500,000 that go to debt service. Doesn't go to fund police, doesn't go to fund programs, it goes to debt service. Those are realities of what's going on. And that's going to be part of the presentation. So you know what? If we do get our bond rating cut, you're paying more for debt service as opposed to programs. That's not good fiscal management. Hartford got rewarded because they have junk bond stats, and they got a $40 million increase from the state. We got to cut. That's the reality of the situation. And I want to just, I appreciate the, the president of the Police Union here, but I want to clarify one thing. We did not cut the opioid task force. We pulled out of it because our, from our understanding, our folks were being utilized way too often. We weren't getting the money we should get back from the other towns. And then, then the other towns pulled out.
All the other towns.
Exactly. Exactly right. Exactly right. So I want to clarify, that's my point. I clarify, we didn't cut the funding.
I do agree with you.
Sorry. So again, again, we didn't, and I don't think we cut the walking police either.
No, we didn't.
So we're, we're.
Okay, you can clear, I mean, we're going to be, if we did, we'll be upfront about it. Again, if we're going to have walking police, we're going to have to cut something somewhere else. That's the reality of the situation.
Not the police department.
Good point.
Getting emotional.
Sorry, I want to clarify though, because we, you know, again, again, the language you had, I mean, you've got to clean up your language. You can yell, I apologize, Judy, you're right. I apologize. Fair point. And the letters will be submitted for record.
Thank you.
And a positive.
Counselor Denny's.
And a positive.
With Counselor Denny's objection.
I have the floor, sir.
And a positive note, I wanted to thank the gentlemen, these fine individuals from the Public Works, did a great job of keeping the boilers up until the temporary boilers up at JFK. Again, did a great, I know many of them worked through tonight. A lot of them did a great job. Doug Finger, Mark Gar, Greg Gabinelli, Ken Kito, Rick DeRoy, Butch Lumber, Chris Fontaine, and Rich Prezuto. I declare Council of Communications closed.
One, I just want to piggyback and thank DPW and Buildings and Grounds for all of their hard work at JFK. And it was incredibly frustrating for the parents, the students, the staff, every resident who heard about it, talked about it, got phone calls and emails upon emails. But thank you to the staff who worked very long and very hard over a weekend and a lot of time put in on that. Through the mayor to the town attorney, I don't know if it is something we could get your legal opinion on, but if we can, can we get an opinion on if those letters should be submitted? Thank you.
Doesn't everyone have a voice?
Yeah, and I just asked if the town attorney could give us his opinion.
Thank you. Declare Council Communications closed.
Item 9, Town Manager Report.
Item 9, Town Manager Reporter.
You have the project and activities report included in your packet. I will do my best to address some of the questions and concerns put forward by council tonight. First, Counselor Crisati, to your question with regard to the Transit Center, my understanding is that, as the report indicates, we've got a contractor who's been engaged. The issue is simply a matter of scheduling the appropriate soiling, boring, soil boring samplings and other items relevant to that contract. So I'll follow up with Peter Bryantson, who is spearheading that project. But we're ready to go. We're just waiting on the weather, as I understand it. So that's where we are with that. With respect to the budget, a couple of things. First, based on the comments tonight from the dais, if council believes it to be appropriate, and we can discuss this at leadership, I'm more than happy to provide another presentation similar to the one that I did make, the special meeting on the 3rd here in chambers, so that the folks in the crowd can see it and also can be televised, if that's the, the pleasure of council. Also, with respect to tomorrow night's budget, I just want to clarify that staff and I were under the impression that we were presenting to you what your requested 1%, 3% and collective bargaining concessions would look like with respect to the $1 million in additional cuts that we're trying, or reductions that we're trying to institute between now and the end of this fiscal year. But to your comments, Counselor Aronony, I also recognize that we're teeing up earlier than we would normally the discussions for fiscal year 19. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with the expectation for the, the information tomorrow. Okay, to, a note I was going to provide an update on, but Counselor Crisati brought up as well, which was the signal at Route 5 and EHS, as well as, as you referenced, Moody and 192 or North Maple Street. I did have an opportunity, thanks to the assistance of Carol Hall, Representative Carol Hall, we did get a, finally, a call back from our assigned engineer at DOT. In short, the pledge by DOT to reimburse the town for the construction of the traffic signal at 5 and EHS is contingent upon them not having to replace the signal at 192 and Moody. It is DOT's opinion that based on traffic counts, now that Fermi High School is no longer a high school, they're of the opinion that a two-way stop or four-way fixed stop would be an appropriate traffic control measure at that intersection. Not having to upgrade that signal, which is what they are scheduled to do, would then free up the funds to reimburse the town for its expense to construct the light at EHS and 5. We are waiting for that to be communicated back to me in an email from my conversation with the engineer. His name is Mark Carlinho. Additionally, I did inquire of the engineer whether or not the town could construct the signal at 5 and EHS on its own accord, not seeking reimbursement, but be able to turn the traffic signal back over to DOT so that we would not be obligated to maintain that signal in the future. That that would be a responsibility of DOT. That answer is also supposed to be communicated to me in that email. I do not have that communication as of yet. The public hearing in question is not with respect to the traffic signal at EHS and 5. The public hearing in question is with respect to the removal of the signal at 192 and Moody. DOT is concerned that without a public hearing and the opportunity to receive comment, if the town were to commit to the removal of the light at Moody and 192 and suddenly be inundated with citizen concerns, we might reverse our course after DOT had then committed the funds not to rebuild the light at 192, but to reimburse the town for the light at EHS and Route 5. So this is a very complex and convoluted, but it's a very complex issue with, which is reliant on limited funds available to DOT being reassigned to other projects as a priority of the town. So that is where the DOT perspective is with respect to the traffic signal at EHS and 5, as well as the light at Moody and 192, also North Maple. The town, as I recall, the town can commit funds from the EHS bond initiative to construct the traffic signal at EHS and 5. I do recall there is an opinion from Bond Council that would enable us to do that. At hand is, based on my last conversation with the Finance Director, is that there is, we're at the point in the project where we believe that all of the bills have been paid, and we currently hold enough money in reserve to cover any of the change orders that have yet to be approved by the state. So in other words, if the state does not approve 100% of any of the change orders, the town is required to pay the balance of that which is not approved. So at this point in time, there's about, I think it's an 18 to 36-month lag time, based on what we submit to the state until they start approving for formal reimbursement. So once we're able to start getting some initial communications from the state that they'll be reimbursing us for the change orders that have been submitted, we can then guarantee that there are sufficient funds in addition to construct the traffic signal. Now, I'll have to confirm the financial aspects with the Finance Director, as he's still receiving input and information from the Building Committee. So there may have been some change in that last component. But that was the last conversation that I had with the Finance Director about the availability of the funds for that project. So I hope that answers the question. That's the best answer I have, because that's the answer I got when I spoke with DOT. So now you know where we are with respect to that project. Sure. To the River Access Project, I believe at the last meeting, when Community Development Director Bryantson was here, there was a request that he come back and make a more formal presentation to council about the full scope of the River Access Project. We were intending to have him here sooner rather than later. But of course, council's docket with some other presentations have necessitated that we move him back to a more appropriate time. That being said, unfortunately, we're not in a position to bifurcate the project for several reasons, most importantly, time. This is a federally earmarked project, and DOT notified us that if we did not utilize the funds in an appropriate timeframe, they would utilize them for a project they felt most appropriately supported the town of Enfield. So we are actually already under a special dispensation, if you will, from DOT and the Fed to utilize this fund, or this group of funds, moving forward. The only reason that this project would be required to go to referendum is because the charter language, and I can't recall the specific language, but effectively, we have to pay for this project first. And by paying for this project first, we exceed the threshold for the referendum. So we can only do projects up to $580,000 before they have to go to referendum. So in this case, it's a multimillion dollar project for which will be reimbursed on the backside. But because we are encumbering the funds in advance, that's the trigger that requires the referendum. So the actual cost to the town will be significantly lower and well under the threshold for the referendum. But because we have to encumber the funds, that's that particular reason. As for the LEDs, I know Counselor Muller, we still have some lights outstanding on order. I should be getting an update on the Honeywell project. We do get a weekly update. I should get that probably tomorrow, maybe Thursday, just because we've got the holiday at the front end of this week. So I'll, I'll take a look. But we had, I think, 50 lights or so that were still outstanding on order. So that would be for the conventional lighting. As far as the theatrical lighting or the stage lighting, I don't know that that would have been included in the project, but I'll circle back with Honeywell and the team on that as well. The Strand, Counselor Crisati, at this point in time, we do not have any funds budgeted, and I'm not aware of any grants that are earmarked to address any hazardous material mitigation or identification at the Strand. At this point in time, our current plan is to simply provide a base renovation of the exterior, clean that up once it comes into the town's possession later next year. Let's see, address the EverSource issue. Post Office Road, Counselor Bosco will follow up on that. My understanding is that was a utility cut, which is probably why it was done a little late in the season than we would have preferred. But I will definitely follow up on that, the Freshwater and the Route 5 for you. Let's see, last, there was the issue of police patrols. I'll have to confirm with Chief Sforazo, but if you recall, there was a press by council to address the activities at the Scantic River Park. We did have to commit additional resources that we had not intended to allocate. I believe, if I recall the conversation correctly with Chiefs Sforazo, we did look to utilize some of the funds that would otherwise have gone to the walking patrols in Thompsonville to provide those additional police coverages at the Scantic River Park. I'll have to confirm that, but I believe that's where the funds came from. So there are funds available, should council choose to continue the, the walking patrols. But that is a, that is a pot of allocated funds which have been targeted for non-use as a result of the cost containment and austerity measures. So I think that's everything I, at least I was able to jot down. So I think that's everything, at least I was able to jot down.
I just had two questions through the mayor to the town manager. Is it still in the works that the town council can take a facilities tour? And also, I'm getting conflicting reports about a traffic light at the intersection of Abbey Road and Broadbrook Road. It's currently a blinking light, and I was under the impression it was going to be a functioning traffic light. So you could clarify?
With regard to the facilities tour, yes, that is something that we are planning to assemble. It was our intention to wait until there was a sitting Joint Facilities Committee, and then, once that group was brought together at the time that those discussions were occurring, there was still a discussion about bringing on counselor-appointed but non-counselor or school board members, so that was one of the reasons we were holding that up. But now that that committee has been established, and it's my understanding that there's only going to be school board and council appointees, we'll get to scheduling the facilities group once we get them together for the first meeting, we can talk about the tour, and then we'll get everyone squared away. Again, I'll have to confirm with Jonathan Bilmess and his team, but I do believe that the light in question was just supposed to be a cautionary control light, it was not supposed to be a fully functional traffic control device, but I will confirm with him. Sure.
On that grant, for, there is something to that. So the state had a brownfield grant that was ready for the ECDC to take, and we be the go-between for that money. But when they had all their issues, the state, they took back the grant, but, and you can actually check on this for me, we can reapply for that. So it was a $350,000 brownfield grant, and I believe it still sits there, waiting for someone, municipality like us, to apply for it. So if you could check with the Community Development, I think they know.
We were aware that a grant was awarded, I believe it was to Save Our Strand, I think was the organization that was assigned, and again, I'll have to, I'll have to check with Peter Bryanson, but we're aware that there was some money earmarked. So that's not to say that, once we take ownership, we're not going to look for that money, but to be quite honest, I'm not optimistic that those funds will be there, only from the standpoint that those have been funds that have been sitting around, unutilized by any organization in light of the state's crisis. So we might be able to reinvigorate that particular project, but it's not money that we've considered or believed to be active within the state coffers for us to access for that project.
Okay, a little housekeeping, I'd like to make a motion to remove item 14A1 and 14E to miscellaneous and proceed with a vote.
So motion to suspend the rules and move item 14A1 and 14E to miscellaneous, to have them second. Second by, motion by Deputy Mayor Suzak, second by Council Falk. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing in, all those in favor? Those opposed? Looks like we have 11-4, right? 11-4, zero again. 10-1, sorry, 10-4, zero again. 10 in favor, one again, sorry. Yep. Town Attorney Report.
Just in response to Councilwoman Gina Sacala's question about letters being submitted for the record, I conferred with the town clerk, she's unaware in the past that we've objected to those. I don't know what the law is on it because it's never come up. I would suggest that perhaps you just want to use a common sense policy, though, that in the past, you know, they've been read into the record by the mayor, they've been read into the record by citizens, I think if they're sent in, just for transparency and clarity, that perhaps it would be shared with the full council, maybe you'd identify who they are from and in regard to what, so that other members, such as Mr. Denny, would have an opportunity to respond and make a comment about it. Beyond that, you know, I don't think you want to get into a situation where you're voting on it, but I can look at the law for next time, but I think it's more of a policy that the council would adopt. The rules and procedures have been adopted, I think it can be more informal and just sort of have a gentleman's agreement as to if they come forward, you know, everybody should get to look at them, if they want to make a comment, they can. But I'll look at the law as well to see what the, if there's anything beyond our rules and procedures that would control.
Any questions for the Town Attorney? Item 12, Old Business, I don't believe we have anything on A1 or 2 on Old Business. Page 2, Items 3 through 14, I don't believe we have any. Item B, Appoints by the Town Manager, you have anything on Page 2 for 1 and 2?
No, sir, not at this time.
On Page 3, 3 through 12?
No, sir.
No? Item C remains stable, item D remains stable, item 13, New Business, oop, sorry about that. Items 1 through 4, I don't believe we have anything. Neither C or D. Item 14, Items for Discussion, it was moved to miscellaneous. Item 15, Miscellaneous. Enfield Town Council requests transfer of fund resolution, be it resolved at the accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfers hereby made. To U Services, travel 22040450-558000 of $1,000. Materials and Supplies, 22040450-561900 of $500. From U Services. Miscellaneous contributions, 22044450-417050 of $1,500. Certified that the above funds are available on January 10, 2018 by John Wilcox, approved by the Town Manager on 1/12.
So moved.
By Council Falk, seconded by Council, Deputy Mayor Suzak. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Hearing in, roll call, please.
Councilor Denny.
Four.
Councilor Falk.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mueller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Councilor Ungary.
Four.
Councilor Arnoni.
Four.
Councilor Bosco. The $1,500 transfer.
Social Services.
$1,500.
Councilor Sacala.
Four.
Councilor Crisati.
Four.
Councilor Davis.
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, and no extensions.
Miscellaneous, item 14E, Resolution, Discussion Resolution, Authorizing Waiving of Property Maintenance Fines and Leans for 46th Ward Ave. Whereas on January 20, 2015, Charles C. and Jean M. Leano were the recorded owners of 46th Ward Ave, the property, and were cited and fined for violations of the property maintenance ordinance, and whereas the property owners did not consent, did not contest the citation, were deemed to have admitted liability, and whereas the hearing officer notified the property owners in writing of such decision. Whereas a lien securing the fines were recorded in the town's land records in volume 2654, page 1,085, and whereas Antoinette Collins is living in the house and has brought the property into compliance and is making regular payments to address the delinquent taxes, and whereas Jean M. Leano, the current owner of record, intends to convey the property to Antoinette Collins, and whereas Antoinette Collins has requested the town waive the property maintenance fines and release the above reference lien in order for the property to be conveyed to her, unencumbered by such fines and leans, and whereas the lien securing the unpaid property taxes and to recover costs incurred by the town to clean the property shall remain in full force and effect. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby waive the property maintenance fees and authorize the release of the lien recorded in the town's land records in volume 2654, page 10,085, prepared January 10, 2018 by the Town Manager's office. Moved by Council Sacala, seconded by Council Crisati, discussion. See.
So I guess my only question would be, should the transaction with, between the current owner and the prospective buyer fall through, would this, should we vote to waive the lien, would that continue? Meaning, is it gonna, is it gonna run with the land, or is it gonna run with the person?
My understanding, and we checked today just to ensure, we checked with the blight office to make sure everything was brought up in compliance that caused the liens to be brought in the first place, and indicated that this new owner has done a good job, and it looks much, much better. Number two, we checked with the tax collector to make sure the taxes were being paid. My understanding is that the transaction has occurred. The woman has already purchased the property, but she hasn't recorded the deed, because I asked that, and we've actually looked at a copy of the deed transfer. So she's coming in after the fact to ask for this relief. The only thing I would say to the council is this certainly is a policy decision, there are many, many of these on the books. I think the lien is about $70,000. Council should just be aware that everything you do has precedential value, so that I've long held that we need a better policy, I've talked to Brian about this, that the liens, we should never let them get to be $70,000 for grass and minor blight. Because a judge is going to look with a very jaundiced eye to say, really, you're taking somebody's house because they didn't maintain it. We do want to have teeth and get them to do the right thing. So ultimately, I think in this case, the person has sold it, she had been in a convalescent home, the previous owner, so I think there were a lot of compelling reasons. So I'm not saying you shouldn't do it here, but my understanding is that the property's been transferred, and I had said, well, she did it at a risk, she can come and ask the council after the fact to do it, if they don't, she's bought the property with the $70,000 lien on it. I don't know who advised her, I wouldn't say.
Right.
What attorney would advise anybody to do that, but maybe she did it with eyes wide open and just figured that the council would look favorably. But my understanding, it's been done, Councilor, so this is a matter of, if she records it, whatever she does, she's responsible for those now, but this will lift it, and there's not going to be anything owed, and the liens are being removed as well.
Okay. So I guess I want to make it clear that I have zero issue with us waiving these liens, given the circumstances. I have an issue, well, in the resolution, it does say that the current owner intends to convey the property, so if she already has, the resolution needs to be amended.
Well, yeah, and I had asked that late in the afternoon in my office, and they said they've seen a copy of it, and that she has transferred it.
And again, this isn't, and I applaud the person who's buying it, and I don't have an issue with it. My worry, and my issue is going to be, if this transaction does fall through, because it hasn't occurred, if you can guarantee me has occurred, that's different, but if the deed isn't recorded, I mean, if the transfer and the mortgage or whatever, then that's recorded, then she owns the house, she owns the mortgage, at this point, the other owner still owns the house without the mortgage, so.
I would suggest, and that was my concern today, and I didn't look to see that they had put in the, I thought, the resolution I'd, when I reviewed it, I wanted to make sure they were up on the taxes, and that the blight had been corrected. So that language, you're right, it should reflect accurately if it's been, well, I mean, technically, until it's, I mean, the intention is when you actually record it, but she did the deed. So what I would say is, we'll wait till the next meeting, they can wait till the next meeting to confirm it. My understanding, and what my office said is, that she's conveyed the property, she just didn't record the deed, but let's confirm it.
Listen, this is my opinion.
Oh.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to stand in the way if other people are going to vote for it, but me personally, I don't, I have an issue with the way the resolution reads, if the deed is already, if the transaction has already occurred, because if the transaction falls through, then the current owner doesn't have, I mean, then there's no lien, we've already waived.
All I can tell is my understanding, she's made all the repairs, and she's been paying the taxes, so I think it's probably correct that she's done it.
I think that's fantastic, and I applaud her for that. I don't want to get backlash for that.
She's here, can she's, she can, she's.
Oh.
Fantastic.
Ma'am, Ms. Collins, come on.
Oh.
Please, come up.
Wonderful, look at that.
Make this unanimous, right?
Ms. Collins, your name and address.
I have an issue with it.
Is this now on?
You're on TV.
I'm Antoinette Collins, I be the resident, 446th Ward Ave, here in Enfield, I have been making payments since April.
And did you, did she sign the property over to you?
It's been signed over to me.
And you just have to now record the deed after this is done?
Yes.
So that answers the question.
All right, and that's going to be done this week. All right.
And I drove by the property, I did a great job cleaning it up, because it was in some pretty desperate stage a little while ago.
Can I just, can I just finish?
Sorry. No, it's all right. Yep. Yeah, you have the floor, you have the floor, sorry.
Then I would move to amend the resolution.
Yeah, thank you.
Stating that it would be 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, paragraph 6, to state then, whereas Jean Leano, the current owner, or the previous owner of record, has conveyed the property to Antoinette Collins.
Second.
That would be, that's my friendly amendment to the resolution.
No, no, second.
If that's what we do.
So, second. We got a motion, a second?
Yeah.
So I want to make before, so before we speak on a motion, Suzanne, just want to make sure you got it right, so we're down, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 is the sixth paragraph, whereas Jean M. Leano, the previous owner of record, and Gina, please correct me from wrong, has conveyed the property to Antoinette Collins. Is that, did I capture your language?
Yes.
Yes.
That makes me happy.
Okay. So now, discussion on the amendment, Council Bosco.
No, I'm okay with the amendment.
Any discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, just, no problem with the amendment?
I'd like to hear the resolution one more time.
Okay, so, all right, so the red, so, all right, so if you're right, you guys are going to make me say this again, huh?
Do you want, do you want just that paragraph again?
No.
So where is, where is on?
Did you have a copy of it?
No. No, I don't.
Do we have any other?
Do you have a copy?
No. Who has paper? No, people have paper.
I'll give you mine, but I'm reading the resolution.
Hang on, we can give you a copy.
Liz, where's your paper?
Right there, a minute.
Joey has paper.
I got here.
No, 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 I mean the papers, the paper, I'm still on.
There it is. All right, so I'll start, and you want to read along, so you're comfortable. So are you, you guys all set? So again, so Resolution authorizing the waiver of property maintenance fines and fees for 46th Ward Ave. Whereas on January 20, 2015, Charles C. and Jean M. Leano were the recorded owners of, were the record owners of 46th Ward Ave, the property, and were cited and fined for violations of the property maintenance ordinance, and whereas the property owners did not contest the citation, were deemed to have admitted liability, and whereas the hearing officer noticed, notified the property owners in writing of such decision. And whereas a lien securing the fines was recorded in the town's land records in volume 2654, page 1,085, and whereas Antoinette Collins is living in the house and has brought the property into compliance, is making regular payments to address the delinquent taxes, and here's where I'll read the amendment. Whereas Jean M. Leano, previous owner of record, has conveyed the property to Antoinette Collins, and whereas Antoinette Collins has requested the town waive the property maintenance fees and release the above reference lien in order for the property to be conveyed to her, unencumbered by such fines and leans, and whereas the lien securing unpaid property taxes and to recover costs incurred by the town to clean the property shall remain in full force and effect. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council does hereby waive the property maintenance fees and authorize the release of the lien recorded in the town's land records in volume 2654, page 1,085, date prepared January 10, 2018, by the Town Manager's office. So that's the resolution as amended that we're going to vote on.
Well, with maybe one change, is that, one of the liens were, whereas the property maintenance was concerned, I believe in 2015, they had remediated the area, but, you know, they left, well, according to the neighbors, they left plenty of stumps and bags that are still there. I mean, we have the photos and everything, but what we're going to ask was that one of the liens be waived because of that reason, you know, it's substantial branches, not branches, I mean, logs.
Yeah, I've seen a property.
Yeah, so we're asking for one more lien to be waived.
Have to come back another time.
Yeah. Sorry, go ahead, so, so go ahead.
You know, this is a bad precedent.
Yeah.
You have it before you, I think that the councilor's question was appropriate about amending that language. My understanding, from the blight officers, the manager and others, that is the extent of the negotiation, they're not going to change the liens on taxes, or the other two have removed blighted property. I think the saying is, pigs get fat, hogs get slaughtered, so I think sometimes you take what is on the table, or you risk losing it all. So I would just suggest, with the amendment you move to a vote, we shouldn't really bring people up.
All right, we can't really negotiate, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And we commend you on doing the right thing, and that's what the purpose of the liens are, is to bring these things into compliance for the property values in the area, so other neighbors don't have to suffer with the blight, but thank you.
Thank you.
Exactly, I mean, the fines actually, even though they got out of control, or actually did what they were intended to do.
Yes.
You know, and that property was in pretty tough shape over a number of years, and I know you folks, and I know what trees you're talking about, because I've driven by it myself. So I know, but again, you know, we can't negotiate at this point.
Yeah, here, now, let's move.
Okay, good.
So any questions I need as amended?
So vote on the amendment.
So we're voting on the amendment first, not the overall resolution to Gina's amendment as recorded, by hand vote, or we can do it by hand, all those in favor of the amendment, raise your hands. All those opposed? Extentions, we have 11-0 on the amendment. Now for the main resolution as amended that we just approved, do you have any questions on the main resolution as amended? Joey?
Yeah, I just think that, I don't like doing this, but we got to look at, you know, one of the things, the reason why we did that, and some of them, if it's already done, then it's a different thing, if we were. If we were, if they were asking us to waive them so they could buy them so they could do it, that's another thing. You know, ultimately, the fines worked, the property's cleaned, and it's in compliance as it stands today. So, I don't really feel tough on this one to waive it. And like I says, you know, really, if someone brings into compliance and they have a property that, you know, it's almost a value of what the property is, at least it's taken care of and we don't have the blight anymore. So, I'm good with it.
Counselor, no? This is your district counselor. Call him.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just say, I think it's important for all those comments to be made, because we will have these come up in the future. People will say, you waived it. I think it's appropriate to know, under each circumstance, why you're doing it. I know there are others that are coming forward that we actually had to go to court, and I would say, no, don't waive the entire amount. We should at least get our attorney's fees back for the cost and expense. We had to go and litigate in court before they did it, not to the tune of $70,000. I wish we got paid that. But, you know, if it's five or six or 10, it should be something that makes common sense to the judge isn't going to say this is outrageous, that you did accomplish the purpose of it, but you're not taking somebody's property without justification. So, I think it's appropriate here.
Thank you. No further discussion, roll call, please.
Counselor Denny.
Four.
Counselor Falk.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Arnone.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Davis.
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, and no extensions.
Motion passed, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you for cleaning the floor.
Yes, well done. Item 16, do we have anyone who would like to speak before the council, from the public? Sorry, what's? So, I just want to make sure they were.
Judy Kilty, 83 Abbey Road. I just have a question under the town manager. When he addressed questions that were asked of him and he addressed them publicly, I'm looking at the minutes that you people approved tonight, and Counselor Davis asked the town manager for an explanation as to why the CNAs were removed and how that came about. And since he did answer all the other questions publicly, I would hope that he could answer this publicly also. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll wait for Counselor to come here, I don't know if you, okay, sorry.
Now, back and forth.
Yeah. Sorry, anyone else like to speak for the council?
We can ask.
So, you can ask from the public.
Gina Sullivan, 11 Spear Avenue. I'm going to ask questions, I know you can't respond. If I understood correctly, Joe, you said there were eight letters written in support of our social services director that was put into the record. Is it possible to see, can residents see these letters?
That's why it's in the record.
Okay, how does one go, all right, well, how does one go about it? I can find that out after. I truly hope these are not letters written by any of her direct reports. A manager asking her direct reports to write letters of support of her is, at best, extremely unprofessional. Where is your HR person? An employee is obviously going to feel pressured if their boss asks them to write a letter of support for them. People today need their jobs really bad. That's why I'd really like to see these letters and understand who wrote them and if it was any of her direct reports, because that's really, really, it's not cool. And one last question, did, actually, I have two. Did Susan or Paula have the same opportunity to have their direct reports write letters on their behalf? And I'm going to piggyback on Judy. Mr. Town Manager, if you can't answer any of the questions going forward about the Director of Social Services and what she does, maybe it might be great, like you have public works directors come here, or you've brought chief up here, have her come to the next meeting.
Gina, you should be, you should be addressing us, please.
But it's to him. Okay, I'll face you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So, maybe have Dawn come here at the next meeting, so she can address the questions that no one can seem to answer. And I'm sorry, I looked at you, I didn't mean to scare you. Thank you.
You are scary. Scary sex.
Anyone else like to speak in public communications? Declare them closed, council communications. Anyone like to speak? Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Okay, so, when you have management and you work for somebody, there are, that person is really, and they're, they make your life easier or more difficult. I think when you read these letters, you will find that Dawn has managed the department in a fashion that has made employees that are in the director's direct report feel more comfortable. And Brian, could you answer the CNA question, please? Because, first of all, the CNA, from my understanding, has been going beyond what should be done if you're riding a transport with a client of the town. And in, you know, full transparency, people have a right to express information from whatever viewpoint that they have, that you wish, we don't, we try not to stifle viewpoints as we sit up here, and I would hope that the people who have had the floor and the TV will not try to stifle viewpoints that other people have that are in the town. Thank you.
I believe I have Ms. Kilty and Ms. Sullivan's email address, so, since I replied to Counselor Davis's initial question via email, I'll just forward that out tomorrow to them.
Okay.
On the TV, answer, yes.
Sure, all right. Let's see. To your point, Mr. Mayor, in response to the question, reading from my email of Friday, excuse me. During the council meeting of, it says February, but it should say January 2, Counselor Davis asked specifically why the CNAs were no longer being scheduled to ride along with dial or ride to pick up ADC clients. In response to my call for austerity measures in September, the policies and procedures in the email below were brought to Dawn's attention. In consideration of my direction to institute austerity measures, the information listed below and the subsequent discussions with Department of Social Services staff, the decision was made to stop scheduling CNA ride-alongs beginning January 2. Should you have any additional questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to contact me. The email from the Director of Social Services reads as follows. As requested, you'll find the basic dial or ride info below exerted from the DAR Operating Procedures Manual. All riders are asked to be ready 20 minutes ahead of their scheduled pickup time. All riders are asked to specify pickup and drop-off locations. All riders are required to wear their seat belts at all times while on the bus. Drivers announce their arrivals by honking the horn. Riders are asked to meet the bus at the curb. Drivers can assist with boarding and disembarking the bus, but are prohibited to assist riders in and out of buildings, and riders needing additional assistance may bring an assistant with them at no charge. Dial or ride was developed to serve elderly, 60 years of age or older, and physically disabled residents, defined as no longer able to drive. However, DAR does not do medical transportation, and those needing medical transportation are referred to allied. As for the ADC, the eligibility criteria in the policy manual states, quote, "Any functionally impaired adult aged 60 or older is eligible when the following criteria is met." Medical, criteria one, medical problem must be under control and under a physician's care. Item two, must be free of cognitive, cognitious health conditions. Must be able to move about with or without adaptive equipment with minimal physical assistance from others, or able to be transferred safely by staff members. Must be able to partake of food with minimal assistance. Must remain within limits of the adult day center space with minimal reminder, and must behave reasonably well in social settings. Transportation to the Enfield Adult Day Center may be provided by the Town of Enfield's Dial or Ride program for Enfield residents. The cost of this transportation is extra and is not underlined and italicized, considered part of the payment for adult day services. Transportation for individual members may also be provided by personal caregivers and family members." End quote. As a side note, Summers and Suffield DAR do not, nor have they ever provided a CNA on the buses they use to transport residents to and from the ADC. CNAs are not required by any state, federal, or local health and safety requirement to supervise transit services, nor are they qualified to provide emergency medical care during a DAR ride.